Okay, Chris, so I do have us up live. We are live on Facebook and we are recording, so whenever your clock says go, we'll be good to go. I'm gonna start the intro slides, so just let me know when.
Sounds good.
Hi, Brian, welcome to the meeting. You can probably mute your video until your item. There we go. Thanks.
Go ahead, Todd.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm Todd Schmidt, Wannakee's Village Administrator. Welcome to our board meeting here tonight. Just gonna go through a few, a few details for meeting this evening. So for the public who are attending, keep in mind you're automatically muted. I'll be able to unmute, unmute you if you do care to participate in public comments or during any public hearings. Do we have a public hearing this evening? Caitlin?
Yes, we do.
We do. Okay, so I'll go over that in a moment. So during the, during the public comment section on items on or off the agenda, participants have two minutes. And then during the stated public hearings which are on the agenda, there's three minutes per person for those. There is a raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom screen to participate, so click that when it's time for public participation. And I can see the order in which you raise your hand and then bring you in to speak during the hearings. There is closed session expected this evening. The way that will work is this meeting essentially will remain on. However, the village board members will leave this meeting and will attend a different meeting through Zoom. So you'll see a screen that will look like this during that period of time. You won't be able to see or hear anything. And then when we're done with closed session, we'll start to get back in. You'll see us return. So to the board members, remain muted unless you need to participate if you can. And except for board members, also mute your video unless you're participating and we'll still consider all votes to be taken by roll call and just remember to unmute when that time comes. So with that, back to Chris.
Okay, thanks, Todd. I'm going to call our village board meeting for April 5th, 2021 to order roll call, please.
Nyla Frye.
Here.
Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Bill Random. Kristen Rungy.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here. Thank you, Caitlin. Next, we have confirmation of open meeting complaints, public postings, official notices, and online availability.
I can confirm that the draft was posted or was published in the Wannakee Tribune on April 1st. The final agenda was posted at all three village posting locations on April 1st. And the final agenda and packet were made available online on April 1st.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin. Next, we have consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled or I'd look for a motion?
I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Erin Moran. All right, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please, Caitlin.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next, we have our public comment section. If you'd like to make a comment on an agenda item or a non-agenda item, this is your time to do so. Please raise your hand and Todd will bring you into our meeting.
And while I'm watching, I don't see any hands jumping up quite yet, but I do have one item, Chris. I got an email from Ellen Schaaf from the Chamber of Commerce that she asked us to read. So just want to share on behalf of the Wannakee Chamber, I'm happy to report that the 150th Celebration Coin Promotion is off to a terrific start. Since last week, the public has been able to stop by the Chamber Office to receive their free commemorative coin. With this coin, they can participate in promotions and discounts from over 60 local businesses all year long by showing their coin, which is a very cool, very cool coin. "The feedback has been awesome and people are excited about the coin and other activities associated with celebrating our village's 150th year." And I see Mike Marty. I'm gonna bring Mike in. Okay, Mike. If you go off mute, you can be able to speak.
You're still muted, Mike.
Oh, there you go.
Now? Yep, go ahead.
I'm the surveyor for the Steinhauer CSM. I just wanted to let the members know I am available if anyone has any questions on that agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. And I can pull you in as a panelist if need be at that time, so I'll, I'll let Kevin direct if that's needed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then I, I don't see other hands, Todd, so I'm gonna. I, we actually have one great piece of information right now for the public. This came from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation this morning. So it says, "Thank you for all your thoughts and discussion on the important project on Wisconsin Highway 113 between Knutsford Drive and Wisconsin 19 near the town of Westport. Due to recent Wisconsin DOT programming changes driven by COVID-19 relief funding, we have, we have advanced this Wisconsin 113 project from 2025 to 2023 construction. With the safety concerns at the Wisconsin 113 and Arboretum Drive, Long Road Intersection, this property was a priority for the department to advance to address these safety needs." So that's a great piece of information. I know that was a concern for many of our residents. And getting it moved up by two years is a, is a good win for the community. So happy to report that. Thank you for the efforts of Todd, as well as Tom Wilson from Westport and the notifications to the state and getting that funding available to us. It's a good thing for our community. I'm happy to report that.
And I'd add, Chris, that Kevin even has been involved on both Westport and Wannakee's behalf and, and has been active in the discussions with DOT staff and officials.
Absolutely. And as always, Todd, thank you for catching that for me. Kevin, I see your picture on the screen now. I'm used to seeing you in a different screen, but that's a good picture of you now with that, so appreciate you bringing that in, Todd. Okay, any other public comments? I don't see any more hands raised, so going once, going twice. Okay, so let's move on then to our next item, which is our public hearing item, Public Hearing and Discussion Action on Certified Survey Map Dividing Two Lots Previously Combined into One, Steinhauer, Alex Court, Town of Westport. Kevin, are you doing this one?
I am.
Awesome.
So it's a two-lot certified survey map, and some of you might recall that initially these lots were combined into one lot. And now they're being separated again. There was a change of mind of the owner that owned the two lots. But there were some utilities that were relocated, but those will stay in place as they are now. Has really zero impact on the village of Wannakee. It's in the town of Westport. And the Joint Planning Commission, the Plan Commission, none of them had objection, had recommended approval.
Okay, so then I'm gonna open up our public hearing and see if there's anybody in the, in the crowd that has any questions in regards to this item on the agenda. So this would be your opportunity. Again, raise your hand and Todd will bring you in.
Okay, I have my eyes on the attendee screen and I don't see hands at the moment.
Okay, I'm gonna do my going once, going twice. The public hearing is closed at this time. So board members, any questions for Kevin? In regards to this topic, if you have one, please raise your hand. I'll call on you. If not, then I would look for a motion.
You know, this is a town of Westport approval already, and I make a motion, we approve the certified survey map for Alex Court, subject to the further approvals by the town of Westport.
A motion by Phil Williams, who have a second. Second by Nyla Frye. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote, please, Caitlin.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I will just make a comment that if any of you know the old Hollywood squares, Kevin, your background looks like Hollywood squares and you're one of the celebrities in there. So good for you. All right, next we have, and welcome, Bill Random. I see you just popped on the screen. So next, under new business, we have discussion update regarding COVID-19 pandemic. Todd, do we have anybody here tonight other than, well, Dr. Random joined at a perfect time, but is Scott with us tonight? I don't see him on here.
Yeah, I don't see Scott at the moment. No.
Dr. Random, any comments with regards to? I'll, I'll draw this out as long as I can, so you can chew. With regards to COVID-19, any updates that we may want to have for the public?
So I actually got everybody's, uh, the vaccine stuff is coming every day. There's different ways to sign up. The hospital is pretty quiet, actually. I hate to jinx everybody. It's been pretty much the same for the last two weeks, little more in the 40s and 50s group that started to show up probably because they thought they were safer than they are. So trying to get everybody to wear the mask till they're fully vaccinated and wear their masks in the group still. So thanks.
Awesome, thank you. So still be vigilant, I think is the comment from Dr. Random with regards to your masks and wearing them until you're fully vaccinated. And then even at that point, it's still not a bad thing to wear your mask. So, all right, thanks you. Got anything?
Yep, a couple of things to share. April 15th, staff will be meeting with consultants from AVI Systems regarding our approach to go to a hybrid meeting system as soon as possible, so that, we're gonna kick that off, get them to understand our needs, our functional meeting needs to get the systems in place that we need to operate well, very well in a hybrid arrangement. April 8th, the Dane County is hosting a vaccine virtual town hall. They, on their website, or we've even posted information, but there is a 500-person limit. So there is a pre-registration you can do to then participate in that town hall. And I guess I would ask Caitlin's on, Caitlin, any unique instructions regarding the elections tomorrow in terms of COVID precautions and electors?
Um, we're doing the same. This is our fifth COVID, fourth COVID, fifth COVID election. So all the same protocols we've been doing since a year ago last April. Soldiers distancing throughout the polling place, one-way traffic, hand sanitizer, everyone gets their own pen, their souvenir for voting. Then, yeah, all the same precautions that we've been doing in the last five elections. Polls are open from 7:00 to 8:00 PM at the Village Center.
7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Not from just 7:00 to 8:00 PM. Okay. All right, very good. Nyla, go ahead.
Todd, I have a question. We, you're talking about a hybrid way to open up our meetings. Could you explain to, explain to all of us what you envision that as being?
Yeah, good, good question. So we've, being that we've learned what Zoom can do, we've also learned what it can't do. We've also learned some of, some of its own limitations. As we, as some of us start to feel comfortable being backed in-person meetings, I think we should also realize that there will be some people who aren't comfortable. We're also learning that maybe there's options for people who are unable to attend to meeting, a meeting not related to COVID. So we know that with Zoom, there's opportunity for more participation. So what we like to do is kind of maximize the benefit, benefits of Zoom and find a way to allow for participation when we, the village board and staff, are back to in-person. So imagine a, you know, we're gonna be learning about this over the next couple of weeks, but imagine us in the boardroom, the village board there, also public in attendance, but also the opportunity for perhaps a consultant who might otherwise have to travel a far distance or a citizen who might be away from the village and unable to be present but interested in the topic to still attend virtually simultaneously while we're meeting in person. And I think it may also afford the opportunity for us to avoid meeting cancellations during bad weather or situations where perhaps even a trustee is away on, otherwise on vacation or, you know, ill for some other reason to participate even in those circumstances. So we're trying to find a way for everybody to participate in situations like that while still carrying out our regular business.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Todd, thanks for the update. Caitlin, please pass on from the village board our thank yous for all of our volunteers with regards to the elections, making sure that they're staying safe, and we really appreciate all that they're, they're doing. And people, as you come in, remember they're volunteers and help to keep them safe as well. So thank you, Caitlin.
You're welcome. I will pass that along. Thanks, Chris.
Okay. Next, we have approved resolution designating public depositories and authorizing withdrawal of
Missed one, Chris.
Did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry. Updating discussion on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. Go ahead, Todd.
And there's a lot to share today, so I actually have a PowerPoint that's going to help me out. So here we go, update here, April 5th. So a quick touch on some of the things that I've been active with, and I like to think of, of the work that, that I'm doing in this regard. I wouldn't be doing without the support of the board for my doing this work. So I very much consider the pursuits of administration reflecting the interests and desires of the entire village board. One thing that I just completed was a course by the Nehemiah Group and their Center for Urban Leadership Development. Some of you may have heard of this. But they put on a course called Justified Anger, African-American History Course. Now, what's really interesting is this course is specifically designed for white people in our region. It, it has that very direct intention for us to gain knowledge and awareness that perhaps we didn't have. I learned a ton. And there's more information at, at their, 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 their website, which is on the screen, but I all know a number of other municipal leaders across the, the county and the region have also participated in their training and found it very valuable. So I just finished that. It was a nine-week, nine-week process, one night a week. I'm also participating in the Community Learning Project, very exciting. That kicked off last week. There are about 120 community members across the spectrum who are participating in this joint effort of multiple organizations. So that's gonna be going on for six weeks over the next couple of months. As I think you're aware, I'm one of the cohort members of the ICMA and Kettering Foundation Leadership Institute on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We've initiated our work. We've had our second meeting already, and this is gonna be going on for another 16 months or so. I want to share that each member of this group does have to complete a capstone project. And my, my project will be to work to create a diversity, equity, and inclusion strategic plan for progress for our community. I, at the last meeting, there was an interesting discussion from the speaker who talked about there being a conflict between urgency on the subject and patience to good results. You know, that's a kind of a conflicting emotions, and what they said was that to, to sort of reconcile that effectively would be by pointing to a plan of action. So that, that, I think that jives with what I've identified as, as my capstone work. I'd also add, and this is pretty cool, I kind of a, didn't, didn't expect it, but Dr. Benoy Jacob, he's actually here at the UW now, actually recently relocated here at the La Follette Institute. He's gonna be our speaker in a couple of sessions. I don't know, Kristen, if you know Dr. Jacob?
I, I do. Benoy is my boss. He is
Oh, okay.
the Development Institute Division of Extension at UW-Madison. So yes, he is fantastic. And I am very excited that you're gonna get a chance to hear him speak.
Right. He and I are having a virtual lunch with one another next week when I saw that he was gonna be speaking. I introduced myself to him as a member of the cohort, and we're gonna connect and, and talk about the work that our own village is doing. Maybe that could be a really unique connection for us to kind of harness going forward. But here's the list of the communities, really interesting mix of the cohort participants, and I'm excited that Wannakee is in, amidst this discussion with such a unique, broad-ranging group of municipalities that are participating. So also, like I said, there's a lot going on. The, the village has, is participating in a case study that's being coordinated by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities and the Congress for the New Urbanism. By virtue of my, my role in league leadership, I was asked about whether Wannakee would like to be one of five communities to participate in this, in this case study review. And I said, of course, no cost to us to, to gain some insight and learn about ourselves more. And this is going to be review, to review how our zoning works to support workforce and missing middle housing. Certainly, those are terms that our Housing Task Force identified as areas that we ought to address. So I raised my hand, said certainly. So CNU has done this work in Vermont and Michigan very successfully. So we're gonna be part of this, this group of case study cities to help essentially put together a work group, a guidebook for risk counts and communities going forward. So that's gonna be happening over the next few months, that study. Similarly, in my association with the League of Municipalities, I'm diving in with the League of Cities as we work to really bolster the League's entire position within the realm of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we've engaged, the League has engaged in contract with NLC to participate in the Race Equity and Leadership Program. And that goal really is to tailor programs and plans to help support communities like ours across the state. So we're, we're well into that as well, and that should come back to benefit us as a community in addition to all the other communities in Wisconsin. Finally, many of us have been busy with our university year projects. Things I can announce are really some exciting work with our Native Nations work and the Nelson Institute at the UW. That planning is well underway. The village president, Chris Zellner, has been very involved as well as others. We do have a staff training where officials from the whole chunk leadership and the students who are working on this project will be providing staff training on April 12th and 14th to, to our sessions, or hour and a half sessions, I think. We've extended that invitation to staff from Westport, Middleton, as well as Fire Department and EMS staff. So that will be useful. There's also a community speaker series that's gonna be kicking off during two sessions with whole chunk leadership on April 29th and May 6th in the evening, and we're coordinating that with the university project and our library. So stay tuned for those details. Other projects are listed on the screen that are underway or waiting to be paired with a particular class, but this is a two-to-three-year project.
Todd, can I jump in for a second?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna let you know that the HR and hiring policy review has been paired, and I've been working with a class this whole semester so far.
Whoa, there's me not paying attention very well. Well, that's great. That's great. I know we've got, you know, a Wannakee resident who works for TDS as a VP and HR. She's on our team working on that. So we, we've really pulled on in a lot of citizens to help us in the process. It's been, it's been a good project thus far. So that is well underway. Any questions about our diversity, equity, and inclusion work?
Okay, seeing none, Todd, I'll say thank you, and I appreciate all the board members supporting Todd and his initiative, and this initiative for the whole community. And I know that we've unanimously supported Todd all the way along here, and I appreciate all your support. So Todd, good job, Caitlin. Thanks for piping in and letting us know what you're working on too there. So appreciate it. All right, next, we have approved resolution designating public depositories and authorizing withdrawal of Village of Wannakee deposits. As I did at our finance committee meeting, I will be recusing myself of this since my bank is part of those listed out here. So I will be recusing, and I'm going to designate. Let's see, I think Phil is our senior person on the board, so Phil, you're gonna be running the meeting during this part.
Thank you very much, sir, and okay, Todd, I believe you're up.
Tell us. Renee's got it for you, Phil.
Better yet.
So this is something that we do annually, so the statutes require us to designate one or more public depositories for our money. And so what we've historically done is we've included all the banks that we work with within Wannakee. We also include banks that we don't work with in Wannakee in case we do have an opportunity to work with them during the year. And we've included the local government investment pool and our investment advisors. And this resolution also covers Wannakee utilities, so you'll see some reference to the utility general manager in here and some of the, the institutions that they work with. So we, at the finance committee, they did approve to recommend this resolution to the board with one small change, and that is changing Wannakee Community Bank, as I had it listed, to One Community Bank, which is the new name for that bank since last year. Oh, and one other thing I wanted to point, point out, so Old National is still in this resolution, but they have now left the village. So, you know, we still will need to bank with them throughout much of 2021. But it is anticipated we will do a banking RFP process later this year, since they are no longer within the village and unable to take our deposits locally. So if anybody has any questions, let me know.
Okay, questions for anyone, please? Okay, I have no questions. Any hands for a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution designating public depositories and authorizing withdrawal of Village Wannakee deposits.
Nyla, you're seconding?
Yes, I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, Chris, back in your park.
Thank you, Phil. All right, next, we have discuss and take action on strand associate task order number 21-02. Technical services for Village Center parking lot improvements. Kevin? Or Sue?
I'm gonna take this, I believe. I can't, I think she's on.
She is.
Yep, so believe it or not, Village Center is 15 years old. And the parking lot has received some general maintenance over the last few years, but it's made it to the point where it needs more help, more of a combination between maybe a mill and overlay and a reconstruct in some portions. And Kevin, Bill, and I met out on site and circled in with Kent. And before you tonight is a proposal for Strand Associates to do the planning and bidding work on this project to hopefully be completed in 2022. You see Kent is with us as well, so any questions, one of us can certainly answer.
I could ask the first question of Kent. Kent, when we redo our parking lots at our restaurants, we look around for soft spots that have to go deep. Have you seen any indication of that?
Yeah, Phil, I think there is some indication of that. Kevin and Sue and Bill had actually, like she said, walked it and indicated there are some areas that are soft out there. I think there are some curves that are sunken and may need to be replaced as well. And, you know, we always look at drainage as well when we're redoing a park, a parking lot like this. So we gotta make sure the water gets to the curves and eventually gets to the storm drains, and that's gonna be part of this. We'll be doing a topographic survey, the entire thing to identify areas that might be flat, might hold water, and obviously correct those with the design.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, board members? Raise your hands. Okay, seeing none, looks like we need to make a motion. So Gary Hertzberg, go ahead. I saw your hand first.
I'd make a motion to approve the strand proposal to redo the Village Center parking lot.
Okay, we have a motion, and Nyla's got her hand up.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Any other comments? Okay, call the question, Caitlin.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Thanks, Cap. Okay, thank you, Sue. Thanks, Cap. All right, next we have. Okay, there we go. Discuss and take action. Our request by Stotts Family Partnership LLC to amend the urban service area to include 6101 Hogan Road, town of Westports. Kevin?
Thanks, Chris. So I'm sharing my screen here just to tell you the partial where the parcel is located. It's, you know, on the corner of. Hogan and Main Street, Easton Highway 19. And really, the the objective or the purpose of this is to allow for sewer extension into this area. As part of the sewer extension, the village is required to get urban service area approved from the. Capital Area Regional Planning Commission. And so this is just step one of some potential development down the road. There isn't any immediate plans for development or redevelopment of this area. There is, you know, vacant land that's that's up near the highway and that's separate from the ongoing operation. There's been discussions with MLG regarding expansion of the park as it goes east. We've had some preliminary discussions with the applicant. Because we think it's important to show you another one of really having that roadway extended through and don't. This is an exact location. We won't know. You know, for sure, the configuration of the roadway system, but this is certainly one potential roadway configuration for that area. But really, the purpose of this is just to start the process in order to get the approvals from Carpecy. In order for allow the sewer and the water to be extended into this area at some point in the future. So I didn't give you a I also add that the the plan commission joint plan commission recommended approval. We'd be submitting this to the capital area regional planning mission on April 12. So with that, when I see if there's any questions from the board.
And I I see Kevin that Matt Schreiner and Mike Lawton are both in who are have been working on this project for the applicant. So. If either of them have questions like or if they need to answer questions, I can bring them in.
Yeah, I told Matt that he's on.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. All right. So board members' questions. I how do I get everybody back on screen now?
Yeah, I'll get you back in there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Nyla, go ahead.
Uh, I don't know much about the planning. Aspects of the village. So I I'm asking this question out of curiosity. Would this eventually become possibly become part of Wannakee or would it stay town of Westport?
I think more than likely that it would be annexed into the village. It's in an area that the town has agreed to never to not object to annexations in this particular area. So in it's surrounded really by the village of Wannakee. So it's probably it's more than likely and logical. For that to be annexed into the village upon redevelopment or development along along the highway.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Okay, other questions? Okay, seeing none, I would just say that the plan commission did vote unanimously to move this forward and. I will make the motion to do so tonight.
Second.
And we have a second from Kristen Rungy. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Next, we have discuss and take action on bid for 2021 Public Works Improvement Projects. Kevin, I'm assuming this is you again. Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't know I was up right away again. It's actually a digital closer. Let me bring that up. Maybe I have the page number.
Page 81.
81. Thank you. Okay, we did. We we received some competitive bids for our projects and the lowest bidder was from Wolf Paving. The Public Works Committee did have a discussion about this project and we are we are well under our. Our budget for for 2020. So we do have some room to do some additional projects. And I told with Bill I noticed that. You should really be looking at some some additional crack filling and. And, you know, other parts, other types of projects that that could fill in towards that gap. And certainly that money won't be won't be lost. It'll just it'll add on to the budget in 2021. We did work with Wolf Paving back in 2018. It was an okay experience. So I think that's I think I should that with the Public Works Committee. They're certainly qualified to do the work. It's just that we'll have to make sure that we keep or who's ever watching, make sure they keep a close. Close involvement in the project to make sure we get the quality that we're that we're bidding out and Kent. Actually, he's putting together a proposal to to have Cody, who's been helping us the last couple of years, really be the the project person. He's. I think Kent, he's probably got, you know, four, three to five years worth of experience. Been pretty good for us. I think he's going to be our key contact point on the project for for 2021. So with that, Gary, you're the chair. I don't think I have anything more to add from the Public Works Committee or anybody else that's on the committee. But they recommended approval.
Yes, I mean, that's Kevin covered the points and was unanimous at the public works. And your comments from board members.
So Kevin, the budget was. I'm I'm gonna go first, Nyla, if that's okay. I saw your hand go up just now. The budget looks like it was 1.6 million. We're at 11272. Leaving us about 325,000, I think that's right, in savings. Is that money that we could use towards any other resurface projects potentially for this year as well? Or are we looking primarily at chip seal?
I think it's primarily chip seal. But yes, if we find projects that you, you know, you want to take on. And do a change order because we got good prices and we get to. I think that's something that's worth worth looking at. I'd support that.
Okay, so if you if you could maybe at the next your next Public Works Committee meeting. Propose that, Gary. Oh, sorry, Kent, quit his hand up. So maybe that's a bad idea. Go ahead, Kent.
You mentioned the 1.27 million. I believe you're actually looking at approving two alternatives that go with the base bid of 1.27 million, and that is Arbor Court and K Drive. And that ended the 1.3. So I just want to make sure you know what your what money you have available to you. If you approve the base bid plus the two alternatives.
Yeah, and that's that's included in the recommended motion.
So that number is 1.3, Kent. Is that correct?
Yes, whatever. It's in the resolution, but it's the higher number because you're accepting that alternatives or you're considering accepting the two alternatives with the base. Yeah.
You know, those are estimated quantities and we have actual dollar amounts for bid items. So we never try and tie the exact dollar amount. So those are those are estimates that we put together when we're putting the project together, but we have firm, you know. What the dollar is for that particular item. So when the project's actually said and done. If we use more gravel or if we use more asphalt, you know, it's all covered as part of the the contract bid pricing.
Very good. Nyla, you had your hand up?
I just wanted to second Gary's motion.
Okay. So we have a we have a motion by Gary and a second by Nyla. Any other comments? Okay, sounds good. Roll call vote, please.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have. Thank you, Kent. Kevin, appreciate it. Next, we have discuss and take action on development agreement and TIF assistance request for affordable housing project at 701 705 West Main Street. Todd indicated that Brian Sweeney would like to have the floor for a little bit with us and give. Give us some updates, I'm assuming. And after that, we'll have a little discussion and then probably go into closed session. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, sir. So Coines redevelopment group has been speaking with city staff for two years. Plus regarding this this particular project, we've worked. Closely with staff, with the plan commission, with the your this board. And particularly in the last four or five months, I think the conversations have just been very, very productive. The whole issue of introducing. You know, a year extension of the TID district. You know, deserved all the time that we've had, you know, to discuss it and extremely important. I often. I'm jealous of my market rate friends in the development world because they have a straight shot. At, you know, it's tough, but. It's not as complicated of a process as the loan income housing tax credit product. So I'm I'm open to, you know, any further questions, but one one thing I'd like to address. You know, in in traditional TIF package, it's the but for case in the affordable housing world, sometimes the but for is but for the grace of God to get this project. You know, moving and finding finding sources, etc. I will admit that three, three weeks ago or so, we were continuing to have challenges with the package with the budget. Which included. Incorporating the potential support from the village and. Your city manager. Or village manager had a contact with. An organization that put us in contact with Lori Heinemann. You all may know her. She's with the Madison Development Corporation. She heads she has something called the Dane Dane County Workforce Housing Fund. And it is headed up by Rich Lynn Lynch of Findorf, and they have raised a lot of money targeted to affordable housing. Their product specifically is, I won't say it's a soft loan, but it's a flexible loan. Which we have had now several conversations with them. We're giving a formal. Presentation to the funding group this week and we're on track to. To you to have have portion of our package to be this long. And I'd say this, that between village support. Which we have requested it, and I think it's the we had the $350,000. Request amount and adding this additional. Loan. Makes this project marginally work. So. Chris, you're you're a banker and you know how how these projects work, but. We we think with with village support and this new flexible loan. We have a project that works and. We're anxious to get going on it. So I'm open. Any questions? Any additional questions that you all might have?
So Brian, I'll just I'll just point out and thank you, Todd, for reaching out to Ryan with that. I had reached out to Todd. Actually, Lori reached out to me. And so I'm glad we were able to to find that and locate that for for assistance for you. I might also like to make sure that I point out this is Brian brought up that I'm a banker. Brian and I do not have any connections on this project whatsoever, nor does my bank have any involvement, just to be very clear as we're going through that. So. With that, any questions for Brian from other board members? Please raise your hand. All right, I don't see any at this point. So Brian, thank you for your. Oh, Gary, go ahead.
I would just say that.
You muted yourself accidentally, Gary. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. Discussions I had after our last. Board meeting when we discussed this, you know, I found the folks at Coines already be, you know, very accommodating. They gave me some real sound background on what they've done over the past 15, 20 years and their experience level. And so. I have a much better comfort level with their organization based on, you know, the discussions we've had. So thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Any other comments? Gary got his hand up right at the second there. So that was great. All right, seeing none. Todd, any any comments from you before?
Yeah, I think maybe just to allow the public to be informed as who are watching now or or watching the recording later. About where we're at in the process, what we've gone through to date and what is expected tonight. And I think Brian Kleinmeyer might be able to give. After I go through a little background, a little bit of a primer on what we're going to be discussing, what content. The purpose of closed session this evening. So so as as Brian mentioned, it's been a couple of years. Brian, I think Brian Sweeney, I know you and I probably first connected four years ago when you started to express interest in our community. But so. So in discussing this with the board over the past few months. We did bring forward a proposal to consider financial support through the affordable. Housing extension. What the board decided to do was was two things, actually. One, send it back to our community development authority to review more broadly how the village board might consider. Approving projects in the future that would care to make use of our affordable housing fund. With the notion that there'd be additional TIF support to that fund over, you know, the next many years. And the CDA has begun that work to review how best to approach programs and policies. And the second thing the board decided was to bring the specific assistance for this particular project. Aside from any policy development to bring this award back to the board. The directly back to the village board for consideration of what that award might be. And that's what we're going to be discussing specifically here in closed session tonight. We did include the first draft of that development agreement in the packet. So the public could see that. I don't know, Brian, if you want to touch on a few parameters of that and then what we expect the board to be considering then in closed session.
Sure. So if you look at pages 109 through 124 of your packet. That's the the first crack at the draft agreements. And. What we did was we took kind of our standard TIF agreement that we've used with our different projects and. You know, took steps to tailor it towards this specific project. And so honestly, at least at this point, it's resulted in a little bit shorter agreement, but. There are certain terms that we'll probably want to insert, you know. And one of the examples are actually two of the examples is on page four of the agreement, which is page 112 of your packet. And so. That section discusses developer obligations and we have kind of. The standard language that we would have typically in there. They have to acquire the property if they haven't already done it. They're going to have to complete the project pursuant to site plan that's been approved by the plan commission. That's language that we've included in other agreements. We do need to have the ability to monitor how this project moves forward. I think really, in in one case, if you look at sections 3C there, there are certain requirements that our auditors are going to have. And then we also just want to make sure that as the project moves forward and we have every expectation this will happen, but as the project moves forward. You know, all requirements related to the definition of affordable housing, the statutory definition is satisfied. So one of the things that we're going to want to talk with Mr. Sweeney about and his his organization is. My belief is there are there are certain requirements that they probably have with respect to WIDA on both of these topics, since this is a WIDA funded project. I don't think that we have a desire to, you know, create, you know. To create too much administration for for Cohen Esri, but we are going to want to talk to them about WIDA's requiring and we might be able to piggyback off of what WIDA requires. And incorporate that into our agreements. As you work through the rest of the agreement, again, for board members who've seen our TIF agreements, it's going to look real similar in certain spaces. You know, one of the things that we are going to want to talk about in closed session is as you get to page. Five of the agreement, which is page 113 of your packet is, you know, what is the amount of the contribution going to be? That that's a close, certainly a closed session discussion. Now, there are certain terms and conditions. If you want to, we can, you know, we can talk about them in open session. I mean, one of them is. As I mentioned before, this project is going to be going to the Wannakee Plan Commission. A week from tonight for final review and action on the site plan. And I know that we've had a lot of discussion, both at board meetings and at plan commission meetings regarding certain things that. We may or may not want to see in that site plan in light of the fact that. Village funding may be provided. And so I don't know. I mean, some of the examples there we've talked about are the new safety steps that the developers have put into place. I know that I think that's something that they commented on at the village board level. I know that's something they commented on at the plan commission meeting. You know, any any parking issues, although I think those have all been resolved as part of the site plan. But I guess that's. that, I guess the question for the board at this point are, are there certain things that you would like to discuss in an open session at this point? Or, you know, certainly on, on the amount of the funding, that would be something that would, I would highly recommend you go into closed session to discuss.
So I, I think Brian, it would be appropriate for us to talk about a few of those. You, you had listed to a draft to us, parking, you two brought up, safety, color, design, those things. I think that's appropriate for us to talk about.
Yep.
In open session here. So the board members, anybody have any questions with regards to the parking or any comments that you want to make or anything that you'd like to see changed or if, if you're good with that, don't raise your hand and put a thumbs up. Is what, what I would say. I'm good with, Brian, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, just to add, if, if, if anyone had a chance to watch the last plan commission meeting, the developer had made a presentation about some of the updates that they had made based on the board meeting. And so my understanding is that the, it is essentially what we're going to be talking about at the plant commission meeting in a week includes those changes. And I'm not sure if Brian wants to comment on that, Mr. Sweeney, but I do think the site plan has been updated based on some of the comments that the village board members have made in the past, including and specifically related to safety issues.
Correct. And that's where I was, I mean, one of our cup topics was the playground as well and making sure that that was not going to be taken away for parking usage. And I think Brian's already read, if you're not aware, I think that's been in the discussion and that will not be taking place. The playground will be going there.
Yes, with, with fencing around it, protective fencing.
So that's, that's been addressed. The Stacy steps identified, if you haven't seen that from the plan commission. Brian, maybe you want to walk them through the the fencing and what you, what you've put before us.
I apologize that I don't have a, the pretty picture, but in, in short, we have added a black iron gate, three and a half to four feet tall from the building itself to Main Street. So there is no physical way a child can open the door and run out to the street. So that in.
Okay. Yeah. And, and I, I think that the, the fencing that was shown to us was very non-obtrusive. It, it, it doesn't look like we're, we're making this into a prison, so to speak. I don't, I don't, somebody I'm sure I'll get hit for saying that, but that, that's what we didn't want for it to look like. We wanted to be a protective barrier. I think that was important to Dr. Random with the safety with, with the kids there in one of our meetings. And so I think that one has also been addressed in the plan commission will, will be. I'm assuming going to prove that as well. Color, my only color, you know, thing was that I didn't like green, I think is what I said very clearly in the original. I wasn't super, but again, that's beauty is in the eye of the beholder and I, I don't know that if we're going to make a decision on that tonight, but if, if you guys have any strong feelings one way or another about the colors. Did everybody, is there anybody that did not get an opportunity to see the different color schemes of the building? Anybody that didn't get a chance to see them? Bill, did you get a chance to see them? You're looking kind of like, ah.
But that's okay. I'm not, it's not going to be, it's not something I'm real good at. Let's put that way. So.
I know that our plan commission members saw it and Gary and Kristen, Phil, I think you saw it as well. Yes. Nyla, have you seen it?
Yes, I watched the meeting.
Okay, Aaron?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, I'll, I, I think it, Gary, you got your hand up. Go ahead.
You know, this is just, I wanted to go back to, there's one question I had when I watched the planning commission and I don't know if it was addressed or not, but the apartment's facing on the first floor, facing highway 19, you know, leaving Wanaki. We have the fencing there. Is there also a, is there also a sidewalk, like a village sidewalk that goes all the way to the end of the property?
Yes.
And the reason I asked that question is that sidewalk needed for those people to, to leave that, their front yard to get on a sidewalk to, to move? What I, what I didn't want to have is if, if they, if they can't leave their apartment from that side. I don't know why we would have a sidewalk there that leads to nowhere. It's just something that somebody has to shovel snow off of and, you know, it leads to a dead end at the marsh.
I apologize. It also leaves for the opportunity to head across that way. You know, to go that direction when they, the direct, if everybody's directed towards the intersection, I think that would be better personally. Sorry.
There's just a comment that maybe they can look at the plan commission level before, you know, the next meeting.
Okay. Good point, Gary. All right. And then the last thing, did anybody else have any questions about any of those that we've identified? How about the balconies? Gary, that, I know that was something for you, the balconies and the design of those. I think they've been modified, correct? Brian, maybe you can address that. Just to make sure everybody knows.
Yes. Initially, we had, you know, something resembling Juliet balconies, right? And I, I, I know the two consultants didn't particularly really wanted to have an ability to step out. So it is a two foot, two foot deck. And, and not just the Juliet balcony.
So full usage of the doors to go out?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I, you know, in my discussions with them that, you know, I'm satisfied that that's much better.
Okay. All right. So I, I think, I don't think I missed any of those. Brian, did I miss anything? Brian? Kleinmeyer, or is that pretty much the ones we can talk about right now?
I think you've caught all the issues on the site plan. Correct. And I think the, the other issues that we have to discuss are either explicitly or implicitly related to the amount of the funding.
Okay. That said, then any, any other, okay, go ahead, Gary.
Hey Chris, the other thing that, that I think came out of this is, you know, discussions with the schools and the, the bus company that they've, you know, Todd maybe can follow up, but I think the they came forward and said, you know what, we would probably consider this a dangerous intersection. And my question was, will, will the school be busing the children from that site to school? And I think Todd, if I recall correctly, the school said, yeah, they would be. And Lamer said they would be busing the kids. So that really takes away a lot of pedestrian concerns that a number of us had, I think.
Yeah, I think I just clarified, Gary, that they have to evaluate that on a, you know, on a regular basis, but the opinion that was shared with, with us based on the question you asked me to ask them was that it, it seemed likely that that would be a bus to all schools location.
Okay. That said, any other questions before we move into closed session? Okay. Seeing none. Brian, do I take the motion first and then read or read first and then get the motion?
I would read it for, I would read the motion first for this particular agenda item.
Okay. So the village board may convene in closed session is authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.851E for the purpose of delivering or negotiating the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. So then we need a motion to go into closed session. Motion by Bill Ram. I think it was Aaron actually that it handled up first. I'm going to give the second to Aaron and roll call vote, please Caitlin.
Chris, before you, before you vote, one, one note, we don't expect action in open session. We, we are assured by Cohen Esri that timing wise for the village board to consider final action on this at their meeting on the, what would that be the 19th? Two weeks from tonight would be satisfactory. So we, we, Brian and staff are looking for guidance from the village board on those bargaining parameters that will then work with Cohen Ezraon and, and come back to you for finalization on the 19th.
Okay. Thanks, Todd. Okay. So we've got a motion, a second Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Kristen Rongy?
Yes.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Chris Elner?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Aaron Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes. You're in closed session.
Okay. Then, and then for the, for the public watching here, I'm going to be going to a screen indicating that the board is in closed session. That'll be the case until we are completed. We'll take, again, not expected action in open session, but certainly in the least adjournment from a regular meeting will occur in open session. So I'm going to be switching that to that here momentarily.
Okay, looks like we're all here. So we just came out of closed session and we just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Bill ran a motion to adjourn second by Kristin Rungy. All in favor? Caitlin, roll call.
Nyla Frye?
Aye.
Kristin Rungy?
Aye.
Bill Random?
Aye.
Chris Elnar?
Aye.
Phil Owens?
Aye.
Aaron Moran?
Aye.
Gary Hersberg?
Aye.
You are adjourned.
Good night everybody.
Good night Gracie.
Thank you everybody. Good night.